Good evening and welcome to the April 5, 2022, meeting of the Edina City Council. My name is Kevin Staunton. I'm one of the city council members and I'm acting as acting mayor this evening. Mayor Hovland is not able to be with us. Calling the meeting to order, can I please get roll call? Clerk Allison.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Acting Mayor Staunton.
Here. Next up on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us in the. Before I go any further, I'm just going to remind folks of the hybrid fashion that we're conducting these meetings in this day. I am pleased to say, we were just talking a minute ago, and this is probably the most people we've had in the council chambers since we returned from remote meetings, and it's good to see everyone, but there is still an opportunity for folks to participate remotely. And if you wanted to participate remotely, you can call 800-374-0221, enter the conference ID 933-8466, give the operator your name, street address, and telephone number, and then you'll press star 1 on your telephone keypad when you'd like to get in the queue to speak, and a city staff member will introduce you when it's your turn. So for those people who are watching remotely, that's the way to participate. For those folks that are here in council, obviously, you'll just come, as Director Bennerott indicated, to one of the side podiums to present. So with that, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Manager Neal.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would ask the council for consent to reorder the items under special recognitions and presentations. I would request we leave item A right where it is, that traffic, the 2021 Traffic Safety Summary Report become C, that the proclamation for Building Safety Month become D, and that we move up the hometown hero recognition to item B under that section.
Terrific. Any objection? All right. Any other changes to the agenda? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Still moved.
Second.
Got a first and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next is community comment, and during community comment, we invite residents to share issues or concerns that are not scheduled for a future public hearing. Items on tonight's agenda may not be discussed during community comment, and we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. And the other thing to remember is that we, you know, if someone else has repeated a comment that you want to make, it's okay to just either say "me too" or nod along. We don't have to hear from everybody the same thing. So that's, it's fine to come up, we're happy to hear from folks, but if the point has been well made by somebody, making it a second time doesn't deliver it any more powerfully for us, so. And again, those folks who are watching remotely, I'm going to say the telephone number one more time. You can call 800-374-0221, enter the conference ID 933-8466, give the operator your name, street address, and telephone number, and then when you are ready to get in the queue, you press 1 on your telephone, star 1 on your telephone keypad, and then a city staff member will introduce you when it's your turn. So with that, I'm happy to entertain community comment, so Mr. Zickert.
You need the counsel.
You'll need a microphone, so hang on one second and then, oh, you're going to do it on the side? Okay. You're just warming up. Great.
My name is Ralph Zickert. I live at 4311 Cornelia Circle. The need for additional fire department resources is unquestioned, a point which has been known for over three years. I find it unfortunate that a site proposed with so many unanswered questions is thought to be ready to go to the council. What the city has shared so far is woefully short on the information needed to justify any location for Fire Station Number Two, let alone the Roslin Park location as its number-one choice. One, there is no ability to expand the Roslin location to meet future needs. The site would have permanent obstructions on three sides and no good access on the fourth. Have we not learned anything about a site that cannot accommodate future growth? Two, the Roslin location, as represented on that slide by the top portion, is less than 1 1/2 acres, not the 2 to 4 acres that the city has said it needed. In fact, the entire Roslin parking lot only represents 2.3 acres. How does such a significant misrepresentation remain unannotated on the city's website? Three, response time. Your residents' lives depend on it. The response time analysis as presented so far, A, fails to account for future development, and B, ignores the three-minute-plus additional time required for large, multi-story structures quantified by the Five Bugles report. The excuse that the city has used so far is that that data hasn't been captured. That doesn't mean it's not relevant to the decision. Yes, any projection including those variables will be imperfect, but it's guaranteed to be closer than a process that completely ignores them. Four, the unwillingness to model the location of Station Three. Why should residents support any decision about the location of Station Two without some credible scenarios for Station Three? Each location is a strategic decision with long-range cost and safety implications that are vitally interlinked. It's not appropriate to treat them independently. The flood risk at Roslin is real. As represented by the proposed site highlighted in the butterscotch box, not only would the station itself be at high risk of flooding, so are the south- and westbound exits. It's hard to understand the city's position that there is so little risk to the station's ability to respond that it does not even warrant comment. In addition, there appears to be no allowance for the city's 50-foot wetland setback or for the Nine Mile Creek watershed district's wetland replacement requirement. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Zickert. Come on up. Welcome.
Aye, thank you. Good evening. My name is Christina Brooks, and I live at 6566 France Avenue South, Unit 810. We're also known as Point of France condominiums. I'm the president of our homeowners association, and I'm here to ask the city council not to build a fire station and parking ramp at Roslin Park. Roslin Park is unique for its central location, large size, ease of access, range of amenities, and remarkable variety of plant and animal life. We do not want to see the desecration of a neighborhood treasure which is enjoyed by thousands of people each year. Just like so many people from all over Edina, our homeowners enjoy walking around the lake, scouting for wildlife, playing disc golf and pickleball, participating in nonprofit walks, and gathering to watch the Fourth of July concert and fireworks. We believe that a fire station and parking ramp at Roslin Park would further stress the environmental health of a park already facing poor water quality and algae in the lake, create disruption to wildlife, causing some to leave or die, make it more difficult for families with young children, strollers, and picnic gear to navigate towards the pool and park, create security risks inherent with a multi-story parking ramp at a time when crime is increasing in the Southdale area, cause safety concerns as the presence of emergency vehicles around hundreds of children is not an ideal combination, create possible problems for the park and the new facilities as the area is located in a flood plain. Making Roslin Park a hub of emergency vehicles will also cause additional traffic flow problems for a neighborhood already facing heavy traffic. Prior to COVID, cars would sit through two traffic light cycles at 66th Street and Valleyview Road during key times of the day. In addition, emergency vehicles traveling on 66th Street between the lakes will have to navigate a narrow road and a narrow bridge where it's difficult for regular traffic to safely pull over and make way. Roslin Park is the largest green space in the southeast quadrant of Edina and should never be diminished. Building there would destroy the natural beauty of the park and reduce both open space and green space at a time when the Southdale area is experiencing heavy urbanization. What we are learning from other communities who have gone through urbanization is that this is the most important time to retain and protect as much open space and green space as possible. Once those spaces are gone, we never get them back. So please do not put a fire station at Roslin Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Yeah, come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, counsel. My name is Greg Paulus. I too live at Point of France. I'm number 1204, and I have three points I'd like to make. I too think it'd be a bad idea to put a fire station in Roslin Park. In terms of response times, I took a real close look, as I know you all have, at the 2016 study that you commissioned, the Five Bugles study. I know that last year, there were 6,000 calls, fire calls, in all of Edina, and 3,093 of those came from the southeast quadrant, and most of those were EMS calls. There is a great map, E2A, in that 2016 study, and if you look at it, it's a heat map that shows you where all those calls are coming from. And if you look at it, it looks to me like the epicenter is about at 74th, just east of France, maybe at the intersection of Park Lawn and Eden Borough. So if you move the fire station to the far north of the southeast quadrant, you're moving away from that epicenter. And so although, as the fire chief says, when you look at all of Edina and the theoretical response times to all of Edina, the Park Lawn site is for him best situated, that's a theoretical look. It doesn't look at where the actual calls are coming from. And if you look at where the actual calls are coming from, they're coming from the south. That's where the heaviest concentration, heaviest need is, and the growth in the future will go that way, to the south and to the west. When you look at the Pentagon Park site, which I know you also have under consideration, it is better situated relative to that epicenter and where that growth is going to be. So I know response time is critical, and I think we ought to pay attention to where the calls are actually coming from. My second point has to do with Station Three. It was a key recommendation that Edina needs this Station Three. When you look at where the deficiency is currently, it's in the northeast quadrant for the most part. That's where we fail the desired response time. And so to me, it looks as if the city is now talking about a two-station approach to Edina by putting this Station Two so close to 62, which I think would be a mistake, because even though you place Station Two by Roslin, that does not solve the problem with reaching the northeast quadrant. And I think it would be short-sighted to go and abandon that third station. And if you're going to put a third station in, most likely at 50th and 100, it only makes sense to look at where you're going to put this Station Two. And to me, it belongs further to the south in the context of having that Station Three. And my final point has to do with that parking lot I too, I paced it off in terms of what the acreage is. One step equals three feet. And to me, it comes out to 2.3 acres. So it doesn't equal the four acres, so you'd either have to take the hill, a parking or playground or something. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Paulus. We'll have to get some measurements out there. Different-sized strides, anyway. Come on up.
It's good. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. Counsel, Roberta Castellano, 4854 France Avenue South, and I'm here to speak about the Fire Station Number Two and particularly Roslin Park. I actually did a measure on Hennepin County Interactive Map Site, and measuring most of the parking lot excluding the 64th Street, I came out just shy of two acres. That's a rough measurement. And so Five Bugles, it was stated that Five Bugles recommended two to four acres for each additional fire station, for each new one. So we're looking at a two to four acre range, and that's, so that would represent two acres. That doesn't, and does not include pool and park, parking, does not include ECMO vehicle for cardiac arrest, and does not include Public Health Division services. So then what I did was I took the four-acre max, and so I just measured out four acres, and as you will be able to see a little bit better in a close-up here, when you have the papers I'll hand it in, is that you would have to remove park property in order to get to the maximum of four acres. And what I also put on this sheet is, I quoted a segment from Edina Sun December 2021 about the services. Not only would there be Public Health Division, but apparently it's anticipated that there would be expanded Public Health Division services. And so all of those things, you know, would factor in. Plus, on the space needs assessment in the Five Bugles design, I have a couple pages here I'll hand in, one for Fire Station Number Two, one for Fire Station Number Three. Fire Station Number Two is proposed at 52% more space than the proposed Fire Station Number Three, and that's significant, too. I think that's it on that. I did want to say, I see a problem with notification and with communication, with transparency, because it's not just a private site. Roslin Park has a public park of community-wide significance, and it has a community pool of community-wide significance. So for example, if you were to propose it at 70th and France, or as it was at 66th to 6800 France, on a private property, that's one thing, you know, oh, 1,000-foot notification, okay. But when you add in community-wide significance, you should be notifying the whole community about it. It just, it just defies reason that they haven't been notified unless Roslin Park is being fast-tracked. And once you get that in, once you make the site determination, then you can do something like expand. You'll have to expand because it has to be big enough to meet the service requirements. So I just, you need to go back to the table and get word out to people. So I'm way outside a 1,000-foot notification area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castellano. If you want to leave the documents with us, we can certainly give them to the clerk. Sure, come on up. I'll get you next. She's going to go.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Abbott. I also live at 6566 France Avenue South in Unit 308, and I want to follow up on the comments that were just made, because I came here tonight to talk specifically about process. I live within 1,000 feet of one of the proposed sites, and I learned last week that notification was sent to anyone who lived within 1,000 feet. However, I didn't get notification. I understand that the board of Point of France may have gotten one letter, but as a taxpayer and a resident and a voter, I didn't get that notification. I did hear from the neighbor about the public meeting that was held last week, and I will note it was the only public meeting, I learned, that's going to be held on this issue. As the prior speaker just said, this is not an issue for just the people who live within 1,000 feet. It's an issue for all the residents of Edina, and probably beyond that, because so many people do use that park. So what I also learned at the meeting last week is that, as I said, that's the only meeting. Those few of us who did get notification about what was happening are only given until April 15th to get in comments. That means people who don't know about it aren't going to get in any opportunity to get it in. Then the staff's going to take all of those comments and within a matter of a couple of weeks, make a recommendation to the council. There will have been no public hearing. There will have been no chance for us in the public to respond to that information. I asked specifically when we would get that information, and it's like the rest of the packet, the Friday before the meeting or something like that. So quite frankly, I'm appalled by the process. I've only lived in Edina for two years. I thought Edina was known for its good government and its open government, but it doesn't feel like that to me. When we appeared at the meeting, the public meeting last Thursday, there were more than 100 people there, and the, for a pejorative term, the dog and pony show, those people who are, it appeared promoting Roslin, gave lots of information about Roslin Park site, not as much information about the 76th Street site. But they gave their presentation, and then only gave a little bit more than 30 minutes for the more than 100 people there to ask their questions or to make comments. And I know that there were many, many people who did not get to give their comments there at that time. The staff just cut them off. I actually was bold enough to ignore the staff and say I wanted to talk, and I talked anyway, but most people aren't willing to do that. There are so many issues, and I'll let other people talk about the specific problems with Roslin Park, but for me, it's more a process issue. The people of Edina are being short-circuited here. I'm asking that you allow more time, that there be more notification, that there be more information given. There's still lots of questions we don't have the answers to. Once the site selection is made, the horse is out of the barn. We all know that, and the people of Edina are really only going to get just a few comments on the margins about whatever site it is that is chosen. So greater transparency, more information, a public hearing, so that you, our decision-makers, can actually hear what the public has to say on the site selection. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott. Yeah, come on up. It bends.
My name is Kathy Friedel. I live at 6566 France Avenue South in Unit 710. I believe that many Edina residents favor a new fire station, but not at Roslin Park for three reasons. These are all based on the concept of future-proofing Edina, a concept clearly articulated by the fire chief last Thursday. First, most of the current and planned development for Edina is south of 70th Street and west toward Highway 100. In the future, development may go past Highway 100 to include areas currently occupied by hotels and other businesses. There are also neighborhoods, current neighborhoods, like Dewey Hill and Cahill. Importantly, the possible third station will be located close to the Roslin Park site, leaving south and west Edina without adequate coverage. Locating the fire station on 76th Street future-proofs Edina in terms of fire safety. The second reason is environmental. The parking lot is a designated flood plain and is located very close to wetlands, which are part of the Nine Mile Creek watershed. How will the land support the deep pilings required for a three- or four-story parking ramp and a multi-story building? How will the green spaces and wildlife be impacted? Is the site large enough to accommodate the scope of the project? Future-proofing the environment in and around Roslin saves it for our children and our grandchildren. The third, and perhaps most important, reason is that Roslin Park is a landmark enjoyed by many Edina residents. It has beautiful walking paths, is the only aquatic park in Edina, and houses a wonderful children's playground. It is one of the few green spaces in an area being rapidly developed, with where will all these new families go to enjoy walking and the outdoors? In the summer, there are buses bringing children from all over Edina, and the parking lot is able to accommodate these buses, while a parking ramp may not. Roslin Park will be forever scarred with a huge building that could be placed in another more suitable location, and we will permanently lose precious green space, which can never be replaced. We need to future-proof our green spaces, especially Roslin Park. We ask you to carefully consider the 76th Street site for the station, since it will better meet the future safety needs of Edina, will protect the environment, and will save a landmark used and enjoyed by many. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Friedel. Any other comments? Come on up. And I'll get you next. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Carla Crawford, and I am the managing agent of Cornelia Place Apartments in Edina. So I'm here to speak on behalf of the residents that I represent. Just a second.
Our Modern Notes.
I couldn't print before I left today, so I was super excited that this would work, but now it's super small.
Take your time.
Thank you. Again, good evening. My name is Carla Crawford with Stephen Scott Management, and I represent 100 homes and about 150 residents at Cornelia Place Apartments, a stone's throw from the proposed fire station at Roslin Park. You have asked for feedback, and I'm here to give you that feedback on behalf of our community. We have major concerns, and we question any decision like this that would negatively impact so many Edina voting citizens who live in this residential neighborhood. Why would a city consider taking away parkland and add traffic and noise to a park now used by kids, families, and Edina residents out for a walk around the park? Noise and traffic. You are proposing to put a fire station across the street from our residential living community. Obviously sirens going off and fire trucks zooming by our homes is a big negative and not one that we planned on when we decided to live here. We chose to build this apartment community and live here due to the ideal location close to shopping, parks, and transportation, not across the street from a fire station. You are proposing to change the very character and culture of our lives and neighborhood. How many of you on this committee council or planning board would vote in favor of a new fire station to be built right across the street from your home? I think I know the answer, and not likely any of you. Then why are you in favor of negatively impacting our homes and our lives? We are hoping it's not because the land is free and it's economically better for the city. Please consider the ramifications of added noise and traffic to us. Alternative uses. Let's suppose for a minute that a developer came forward with a proposal to build a new industrial facility on this parkland. That business would include a parking ramp, commercial, industrial-looking building, and truck traffic that makes extremely loud noises. Oh, and by the way, those noises could go off at any hours of the day and night. The developer asks you for your approval to rezone park and green space next to a residential area for this business. Would, how would the city react? I think you would not want that to go through either. Green space and parkland. Use of Roslin Park for a fire station takes away the very thing that you ask for with every new development in the city of Edina, green space and parkland. Do you not require a fee from a new development to pay for its share of parks and parkland in the city? Why does that make any sense at all? We are very, we are a very active community of Edina residents, many of whom walk daily across the street to the park and the trails there. That is a city amenity and that it's worth bragging about. It's part of our lifestyle and part of the reason we chose to live here. In conclusion, this proposal negatively impacts about 150 Edina residents who live at Cornelia Place due to the location next to a beautiful park. The ambience of the site and lifestyle, we are not in favor of the Roslin Park site, and ask that you consider a better alternative. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. You've brought a prop.
I brought a visual, but I don't think it will fit over there. Someone multitasked.
It will. Actually, if you put it on the table, I think.
Can you do it?
Yeah, they can back off on it a little bit.
Thank you, welcome members of the City Council. My name is Jerry Kraus, 6566 France Avenue South, Unit 308. I'm a former real estate finance partner in a large national law firm and I've spent 25 years of service on land use and zoning boards and redevelopment oversight committees. My focus, like a couple of the other people from Pointe of France, is on water and soils. I'll try to keep my comments brief and not duplicative. Others have mentioned the risk of flooding. In particular, they've been focusing on Roslin. I want to speak a few minutes or briefly about the site, the other site on Pentagon. At the meeting last week, the fire chief made the statement that there was a risk at this site of, because there's water, the risk of water. And the risk is, in the dark blue, it's an annual risk of 10% of flooding. That's a little over four inch rainfall in 24 hours, a 10% annual risk in the dark blue. The light blue, a 1% risk based on a seven and a half inch rainfall in 24 hours. Even with this risk, you still have more than five, maybe six acres of land still available outside that 1% and 10% flood risk area. There's also an existing building there that would suggest that pilings have been effective in putting that structure in place. I know there's been a debate about what the size of the other parcel is and I think it's under two acres, at least the parking lot, based upon the analysis that I could do. We know it's not four acres, but it's something closer to two or a little bit less, a little bit more perhaps. Two acres of land. Unfortunately, this parcel, unlike the one at Pentagon, 85% of the parking lot is in the 10% risk. That is a risk of a flood every 10 years. In addition, as the gentleman earlier pointed out, the intersection down here, even if you could mitigate this, you have an intersection down here that has the same kinds of risk factors. It seems highly imprudent to be building on a site such as this. I don't, I can't imagine what the cost of pilings are going to be in order to support the structures that are otherwise surrounded by wetlands. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Any other comments? Come on up, yeah.
My name is Jim Jensen and I work at, I, I live at 6924 Dawson Lane in Edina. And the Roslin Park location, that's our neighborhood park, it's just a few minutes walk from my home. And I feel this is a completely inappropriate location for a, for a firehouse and parking garage. I won't repeat all of the previous very eloquent and very clear comments that have been presented tonight. I feel we should work together as a community and find a more appropriate location for the necessary fire station. In my opinion, the, the parcel of land on 76th Street is a much better location. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Ms. Davis, good to see you.
Thank you. I come equipped tonight.
Props.
Just a gentle reminder.
There's water over there.
Yep, and it's raining tonight. I think that's a no telling you, no, 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 that area is going to flood. I've seen it flood a multitude of times and yes, that intersection floods. So Public Works comes out with the big roadblocks, you know, and you can't get across that intersection. So it's a serious problem and I just don't think that it would be a wise decision for the city to invest funds in something that's so important to our community. Fargo did it correctly. They had water issues and they decided the best use of the land where there was that much water was parks so that, you know, when it floods in Fargo, it goes to the green grass and then it goes away and everything is fine. But the risk of putting those two massive structures in that park is too much for our community to accept. And then I have to admit, the thought of Roslin Park going away makes me want to cry. We have had a lot of trees removed, a lot of green space removed, and now you're going after our park and all I can say is shame. Parks are sacred sites for our community. I just can't imagine driving down Valley View Road. Right now, I have a good view of the park and the blood pressure drops. I can see the ancient oaks. I can see green space. I can see the pool. I've seen wildlife in, in the water. I've seen egrets. I've seen herons. I have seen wood ducks. And all that would go away. That beautiful entrance into our community would be blocked. And I'm sorry, I'm not buying the monument. I just can't buy a monument. So please don't take away that park. I think we realized during COVID that green space was really important to us. We need the green space, the families, the kids, and it's a community hub. It's just not Lake Cornelia. It's just not everybody that lives in that area, but that's a community park and it's been called the most picturesque in Edina. So how could you take that away? You're going to have me in tears. I get so upset when I even think of this. I just don't think this is an appropriate way to go. And besides, it would all be flooded. So please take that into consideration and I'll take my boots.
Nora, Nora, I preempted you. Can you just give us your name and address?
Oh, yes.
I jumped in before you had a chance. Sorry.
My name is Nora Davis and I live at 6921 South Dale Road in the beautiful Lake Cornelia neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Come on up, yeah.
My name is Dana George. I live at 6566 France in Unit 905 and I'm just here to give voice to somebody that we haven't heard from tonight and that man is Ken Rosland. I don't know if any of you knew Ken Rosland. I happened to have the opportunity to work with him. I spent five years working for the City of Edina. I played softball with him and golf with him. We played touch football with him, so I know Ken Rosland very well. I'd just like to read a little bit from his obituary. He began his public service career with the City of Edina in 1957, becoming director of Parks and Recreation in 1961 and city manager in 1977. Ken's passion for the parks is carried through the community with the development of Braymar Golf Course, Braymar Arena, Edinburgh Park, Centennial Lakes Park, and over hundreds of acres of community parkland. During his career as Parks Director and City Manager, Ken carried many of the boards and commissions, created many of the boards and commissions, which are still a vital function in the city today. In 1998, the Edina Pool Park was renamed to Roslin Park in his honor for his many years of dedicated service to the community. I ask you just not to desecrate the legend of Ken Rosland. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. Any other comments? Anybody online? Okay. Thank you all. What, you know, we've received a lot of emails on this topic and the eloquence and the thoughtfulness that are going into the remarks are extraordinary and, and, and I know how hard it is to fit all that into three minutes and everybody did it, so thank you. Thanks for all that. I'd encourage you all to stay around. We're going to hear from our county commissioner and then we're going to have a, an award to a hometown hero that I think you'll all want to see. So if you can stay for a few minutes, it would be terrific. So with that, we'll move on to our next, next item, which is Manager Neil, your response to comments from the last meeting. I think there was just one and it probably doesn't need a response, but.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, there was one comment and it was offered by Arnie Bigby and it was a comment regarding the importance of civil liberties and beyond that, it didn't have a, doesn't require a request.
I want my pin, by the way. I wasn't here and I missed out on the pin.
I've got a bag of them upstairs. I'll make sure you get them. Thank you. And that's all we have.
All right, thank you. So then the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any items that we're asking to remove from the consent agenda? Yes, Member Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. I'd like to remove Item 6P and, right, yeah, 6P and have that set back to the next meeting if we could, please.
Continue that to the next meeting.
Continue that to the next meeting, yes.
Very good. Any other items? All right. So hearing that, can I get a motion on everything except Item P?
So moved.
Is there a second? And a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. And then Item P, you want to make a motion to continue that item to our next meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I will move to continue Item 6P approved traffic study report of March 1st, 2022 to our next meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Passes. All right. Now we're on to the special recognitions and presentations portions of the meeting and the first item is our county commissioner, Chris Latandres. Welcome, Commissioner. Thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Acting Mayor Staunton, Council. As my esteemed colleagues in local government, it's an honor to be with you here this evening in person this time as your Hennepin County Commissioner. We've got a slide presentation, I believe, somebody's, somebody driving.
Or not.
Oh, no, maybe not. I think my staff sent it. And if necessary, I can drive it from here. I can click it?
Let's try it.
There we go, but it looks like it's off center just a bit. How do we reorient it on the screen? Is there a way to click like full screen?
It's probably the best idea.
There we go. Do I do it?
No.
I think you have the best option there, just to zoom out a bit. Whoops.
What happens though? I'm going to stand right here.
All right. Well, it's a team. Teamwork makes the dream work. All right, so our, our first slide is this map here. I represent District 6, which includes my hometown of Hopkins, Edina, Minnetoka, Northern Eden Prairie, and 12 communities around Lake Minnetoka, and I've served in the role for a little over a year. Local government is built on strong partnerships and I promise to always do my part to ensure that the relationship between Hennepin County and the city of Edina remains strong for years to come. So tonight, I'm just going to provide a brief highlight on what your county government has been up to since we were last together roughly a year ago and leave some time at the end for questions. Next slide. I want to start tonight with a moment of remembrance and gratitude as we mark two years of living with COVID-19. Remembrance as we mourn the loss of 2,566 friends, neighbors, and loved ones here in Hennepin County to this terrible disease. And gratitude for all those who've made it possible to get through these painful years, frontline workers, healthcare heroes, our educators, and our local governments like the city of Edina. Together, we have saved lives and seen residents through this storm. Over 74,000, or 74% of Hennepin County residents have now completed the vaccine series, offering each of them better protection and putting all of us on the path to normalcy. Our public health team has administered nearly 70,000 doses through dozens of clinics and community vaccination events in partnership with congregations, community organizations, and small businesses across our county. Caroline Currie, an organizer for a vaccine clinic at Destiny Hill Church in Minnetoka, put it this way, "We're a faith community and we could make a difference by bringing the vaccine clinic here." Most of the time, members of our community don't have access or they don't feel comfortable. So we wanted to bring the vaccination here where they feel comfortable. Building trust and reducing barriers, that's good government in action. Next slide. As a nation, we have met this unprecedented time with monumental federal investments entrusted to our local governments to steward. This past year, Hennepin County received a one-time allocation of 246 million in federal funding through the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA. And to ensure resident voices helped shape these historic investments, our office convened roundtables and public forums with District 6 mayors, legislators, school leaders, community organizations, and small business owners. We also gathered hundreds of responses to an online survey and I was pleased that Mayor Hovland actually helped us host our mayor's convening, convening here in Edina. The message from District 6 residents and leaders was loud and clear. To balance our short-term pandemic response with smart, longer-term investments, to build a better future over the long term. Housing stability, public safety, partnering with our small businesses, and climate action rose to the top. And on this slide, you can see Hennepin County has moved with some urgency to address these signature priorities and many more that you can see highlighted here with purposeful action. And it's Hennepin's action on four of these topics that I'll spotlight tonight. Next slide, please. Spotlight one is on housing stability. Our region faces an intersecting crisis of affordable housing and homelessness that's been made even worse by this pandemic. One in three households in Hennepin County are housing cost burdened, which means they pay more than a third of their income on housing. Next slide, please. And this is the slide that is the chair of our HRA, our Housing and Redevelopment Authority in Hennepin County, keeps me up at night. There are currently 73,000 extremely low-income households in our county and fewer than 15,000 affordable units available to them. It's a startling gap that directly connects to the visible rise in homelessness across our community, especially in, in, in our downtown areas. Since the start of the pandemic, we've assisted 5,800 households countywide with more than 48 million in emergency rental assistance, including 575,000 to 77-plus households right here in Edina. This federally funded program has offered a lifeline to residents in crisis, but it's not a sustainable or permanent solution. We know we have to do more. Next slide. And that's why with our ARPA dollars, Hennepin County is going big on long-term housing stability with a historic $91 million investment of that total of 246 million. As reported by the Star Tribune, this investment will quote, "Boost the county's normal one year spending by more than 60%." The goal is to help 1,000 homeless people and create 2,000 affordable housing units. And as part of this work, we're also transitioning hotels acquired for our COVID-19 isolation shelters, including Metro Inn that's pictured here, into long-term housing through our new single-room occupancy strategy. Next slide, please. On top of that, through our annual HRA grants program, last year, we invested an unprecedented 17.1 million supporting 1,550 new affordable housing units, including several projects in District 6 outlined here, and you'll see Cornelia View in Edina is among those investments. Next slide. Spotlight two is on public safety. As Vice Chair of the Law, Safety, and Justice Committee, it's one of my top priorities. In 2021, we approved the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office request for 31 new deputies to fill gaps and serve in critical areas of need. We also approved 8.2 million to expand the North Metro Public Safety Training Facility in Maple Grove. And when it's complete, it will be a world-class training space for sheriff's deputies and local law enforcement, increasing capacity and allowing us to modernize curriculum with new technology and best practices. Next slide, please. And in work that I'm perhaps more proud of than anything else we're up to at Hennepin right now, we've authorized the expansion of social workers to eight new suburban police departments, seven of them in District 6. That's now 200. That's now 12 Hennepin County social workers embedded in 21 police departments, serving 30 cities countywide. And as one of the earliest participants, Edina has been an absolutely critical partner as we've learned, refined, and grown this initiative. It was the major topic of discussion when I met with your new Chief, Chief Milburn, a couple of weeks ago, and I believe this is a promising program that really represents the future of public safety. Next slide. Third spotlight. Fully recovering from the pandemic means supporting our small businesses, the backbone of our community. We've provided nearly $70 million in grants to eligible small businesses in Hennepin County, especially those hit hardest by COVID, including 232 grants totaling $2.62 million to Edina businesses. Next slide. We've also established Elevate Business Hennepin County in partnership with the Minneapolis Regional Chamber. It's a program that offers pro bono consulting and other resources to help small businesses recover from the pandemic and build for future growth. It includes up to 25 hours of one-on-one consultation with expert advisors on topics like accounting, business planning, legal, marketing, web development, and human resources. And I think that there's probably not a single business in Edina that couldn't benefit from a little extra technical assistance on one of these topics, free of charge. So residents who are interested can learn more, the website's there, at hennepin.us/ elevate. Next slide, please. Our fourth and final spotlight is on climate change. In 2021, shortly after I appeared before you all last year, the Hennepin County Board unanimously passed our first-ever Climate Action Plan, setting an ambitious net zero by 2050 carbon emissions goal is our new North Star, and establishing a new Department of Climate and Resiliency charged with operationalizing the five goals, 29 strategies, and 145 corresponding tactics that are outlined in detail in the plan. Last spring, in photo, pictured here, I joined your Mayor Hovland in Mini-Haha Creek Watershed District Leadership and Experts at a walk-and-talk event at Arden Park here in Edina, aimed at highlighting the Climate Action Plan's themes of partnership and resilience. Partnership because we cannot do this work alone, any one of us. We all have to be doing it together across governments and across sectors. And resilience because we know that the accelerating impacts of climate are already with us, and there's things that we can do to prevent it from getting worse, but we also have current impacts that we've got to build into our, our new investments. And the improvements at this park are a really stunning and vibrant regional example of best practice and next practice as we think about the future of these climate investments. Next slide. Residents who want to learn more can read the entire plan at hennepin.us/climateaction. And on the website, you'll also find some useful charts and infographics like this one that maps out in detail how we can get to net zero by 2050 through a variety of strategies that you'll see sort of outlined by color block here, including reducing vehicle miles traveled, electrification, and waste diversion, which is an area where Edina has been a real leader through the adoption of your own Climate Action Plan and being way ahead of the curve in the transition to curbside organics. Next slide. And with that, Acting Mayor Staunton, I'll turn things back over to you and be happy to stand for questions or comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. Got any questions for Commissioner Letandras? Commissioner Pierce, or Councilmember Pierce, no? Councilmember Jackson?
I just want to say thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for being so responsive. I know that when we write to you, we hear right back, and I want all the residents of Edina to know that, that your team, you and your team are very responsive, so if they have any questions, I know you welcome their comments and questions. So, thank you.
It's, it's our pleasure, and we are at your service. In fact, there's a final slide here, if I can advance to it, that has the contact information for my office. You or any of your residents, if you have any questions, concerns about something we're working on, or even just an issue that's impacting you as an individual resident, you can be in touch, and we'll help you out.
Well, thanks for coming out, Commissioner. I know I saw you a couple of weeks ago in Excelsior, so you're making the rounds, and, and it's great to have you out here, seeing what's happening in our community as well as telling us what's happening in the county, so.
Absolutely. These meetings are an incredible opportunity for me as well to learn what's happening in your community and keep my ear to the ground, so.
Good.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for coming out tonight.
Yep, it's my pleasure.
All right. Next up is new Item 7B, our latest hometown hero recognition. Director Benneron.
Thank you. Edina is made up of people who pride themselves in making the city a great place for living, learning, raising families, and doing business. For more than a decade, we've honored some of them as hometown heroes, writing stories about them for our website and our social media accounts. This year, we're also honoring them here at your meetings. Tonight, I would like you to honor a non-resident who stepped in with heroic actions late last year. Daniel De Bruzy, who lives in Iowa, often visits family and friends in New Brighton and Fridley. On Thursday, December 9th, he and a friend swung by the Lunsen-Bayer Lee Supermarket at 50th and France to pick up snacks for a party later that night. As they pulled into the parking lot, they heard two women screaming. As they soon saw for themselves, they were just feet away from a carjacking in progress. Most car thieves look for unattended vehicles, but in this case, the owner of the targeted Porsche was still seat-belted into the driver's seat. She was being assaulted by one guy from her own backseat and another from the passenger side of her vehicle. Daniel, who was driving, hastily parked his Dodge Rebel to block the carjacker's best route of escape. Meanwhile, his friend joined the altercation. Daniel entered the fray himself, intending to immobilize the lead assailant with a series of punches. In the frantic moments that followed, a third perpetrator, the driver of the carjacker's getaway car, joined the melee. Nevertheless, Daniel gained the upper hand and attempted to execute a citizen's arrest. One suspect fled on foot, and the other two made a quick escape in their getaway car. In doing so, the fleeing SUV totaled Daniel's vehicle, injured his friend, and caused collateral damage to several nearby vehicles. The victim sustained numerous head and shoulder injuries, and Daniel lost a fingernail after one of the criminals bit his finger. However, both were able to walk away. Lieutenant Dave Venney will now join me for the presentation.
Thank you. This is Daniel De Bruzy, and in addition to being recognized as a hometown hero, the Edina Police Department would like to present Daniel with a citizen commendation for his actions. As you just heard, he put his own safety second to the victim and placed himself in a situation of unknowns without hesitation. He most likely prevented the victim from further injury, and his actions went above and beyond, given the circumstances. So his act of courage and selflessness earned him the citizen commendation.
Thank you, Daniel, for being here tonight. I know you made the trek up, and we really appreciate you coming in. And as somebody said at a previous meeting, that they think that anybody would have done what they would have done, and, and while we'd all like to think that, you did it, and we really appreciate it. As a community, thank you for your efforts. Who gets to follow that? You're up next. Next up is the 2021 Traffic Safety Summary Report. Mr. Baller.
So Councilmember Staunton and members of the council, I'll just introduce Nick here while you get started. So if you recall, the ETC reviewed the workload of this position years ago, and it was a part-time position, and it was just too much work and too many requests, so they recommended to go to make this position full-time, and Nick accepted that. He's been in that role ever since. And part of that recommendation was to provide a report to the council every year, so he comes every year and provides a report of the last year's traffic safety requests that he's received, and the committee has gone through and just wants to give the council an update tonight. So with that, I'll go to Nick.
Thanks for being here, Nick.
Yeah, thank you, Acting Mayor Staunton and the rest of the council here. Yeah, again, my name is Nick Baller. I'm the Traffic Safety Coordinator for the city of Edina here, and I'm just going to be going through the 2021 Annual Traffic Safety Summary Report. And in this report, I'll be going through a bunch of statistics and also some trends that we kind of have been seeing now that we've been collecting this data kind of consistently over the last handful of years. Just a quick summary of how a process, or a request is submitted. I'm able to receive a request from a resident, any type of stakeholder throughout the city, and I'm able to determine if we have available data to review the request or if further data is needed to be collected. And then it is ultimately analyzed by the Traffic Safety Committee for, if there is any type of recommendation to be made to make any type of improvement, and then that's brought forth to the Transportation Commission for any reviews and comments, and then ultimately it's brought here to City Council for final action. And within this whole process, I'm remaining in communication with these residents or stakeholders as their process goes. When a request is received, it's broken into one of these five categories. They include parking and signage, where it's any type of sign requested throughout the city that doesn't control traffic, such as the next category of intersection control, which can be stop signs, yield signs, or any request for a traffic signal. When we receive traffic calming requests, those are solely with the intent of wanting to slow vehicles down. And then we have pedestrian safety, and those can be, more often than not, requests for crosswalks. And then anything that doesn't fall within those first four categories is considered other. An example of that would be requests for lane markings, as an example. So in 2021, there were 180 requests that were submitted. That ended up being 23 more than in 2020. And requests can be submitted by phone, mail, email, the city's website, and also the Edina 311 app. There were 165 requests that were reviewed, which were seven more than in 2020 as well. And 15 of those requests were submitted in prior years but were reviewed in 2021 due to whether we needed traffic or data to be collected or needed to be reviewed by the Safety Committee by more than one occasion. You can see parking and signage received the most type of requests at 41, followed by intersection control at 38, pedestrian safety at 33, traffic calming at 32, and then all others were those last 21. When items are reviewed, they are put into one of four categories. There were 18 A items, which are where the Traffic Safety Committee recommends approval for action. There are seven parking and signage approvals. One example was to add short-term parking just on West 50th Street, directly west of France Avenue, to accommodate for customer pickup or drop-off parking in those little bus pull-off areas. There were seven pedestrian safety approvals. One example is an anticipated crosswalk to be installed on Valley View Road, and that's kind of in that Mark Terrace, Cheyenne Trail area that should be, yeah, installed sometime this summer. There were two approved traffic calming requests, along with two intersection controls. One example of that was updated lane markings for West, or I'm sorry, for eastbound traffic on Market Street approaching France Avenue to ultimately line up with overall traffic flow in that area. There were 14 B items, which is where the Safety Committee recommends no action, and 133 D items. Those are where, those are items solely handled by myself, the Traffic Safety Coordinator, and those are handled due to other policies in place, whether that's crosswalk policies or policies put together by the state of Minnesota for stop signs, as one example. As you don't see here, there are no listed C items, which are where the committee recommends further study, because ultimately, every C item ends up becoming one of the A, B, or D items. So those aren't tracked here. We ended up looking at how all of the requests were received throughout the city just based on quadrant, and here in the northwest quadrant, you can see there were 49 requests that were submitted. This ended up being 17 more than in 2020, with pedestrian safety receiving 13 of those requests. And you can see that there's a good amount of requests that were submitted in that Grand View area, along with the Interlochen and Vernon intersection. In southwest Edina, we received 32 requests that were submitted, which were eight more than in 2020, with parking and signage and pedestrian safety both receiving nine of those requests each. One big area that we've been receiving more requests in 2021, in 2021, excuse me, was along West 70th Street between Antrim and Metro Boulevard. In southeast Edina, we received 26 requests, which was one more than in 2020, with intersection control receiving the highest amount at 11. And a lot of those ended up being at county roads, so on France Avenue stretching from 65th down to Park Lawn, and then also you can see some on York Avenue as well. In northeast Edina, where we receive our most amount of requests, there were 73 in 2021, which ended up being three less than in 2020, with parking and signage receiving the most requests. And you can see a lot of those were in the morning side neighborhood, but also you can see a high amount of requests along West 50th Street when you go from Highway 100 all the way out to France Avenue, along with a high-density number of requests at the intersection of West 58th Street and France Avenue due to the completion of a newly-installed traffic signal following the West 58th Street reconstruction project. We also wanted to look at when requests are received to see if there is some type of trends. And if you see here, April and May received a high number coming from the winter months as a lot of those requests were along Connector and Collector Streets. These numbers can be seen kind of due to a return to pre-pandemic numbers compared to in March and April of 2020, when the governor had his stay-at-home orders set. And then in June and July, Hyde numbers were still received. A lot of these were in the high-volume areas as well, like I mentioned earlier, on Grant or near Grand View, along with West 50th Street and along France Avenue as well. And a similar trend as the last couple of years, parking and signage in that green remains fairly steady as the year goes on, so it doesn't really have a big seasonality. Now that we've been collecting data as consistently as we have for the last four years, we're able to track it by category. So one big thing that kind of jumps out is how traffic calming has been increasing overall since 2018, where ultimately parking and signage, intersection control, and pedestrian safety are fairly steady, especially if you remove the, the pandemic year of 2020. So I would just like to say thank you all for your time, and I'm open for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Baller. Any questions? Carolyn.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. Can you tell us, sort of, give us some examples of what the parking and signage questions are? What would be two or three typical complaints that you receive?
A lot of it is people looking to either add on-street parking on their road, remove on-street parking, like it's difficult to back out of my driveway when a vehicle's parked across the street. Another example can be requests for no outlet signs. That's been received a little more in the last couple of years.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. That's all.
Other questions? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Acting Mayor, I'll just add one other piece. Nick, you know, you see those requests, a lot of them end up on Hennepin County facilities, so he works very well with Hennepin County staff. So he works very well with Hennepin County staff to work through some of those issues on France and in York Avenue and 66th Street. So since I saw Commissioner still here, I thought I'd give a shout-out to the transportation staff there. And Nick works real well with that.
Sure, like that 58th Street signal was a great success story.
Exactly. Yep.
Cooperation and collaboration. Well, thanks for your work. All right. Thank you all. All right. Next up, Mr. Fisher. I hear it's Building Safety Month. Come on up and... I have a proclamation I'm supposed to read, right? Where is it? Is it on the...
Okay, well...
No, I can get it. I can get it from here if I can. Here we go. All right. Whereas our city of Edina is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster. And whereas our confidence in the structural integrity of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, such as building safety and fire prevention officials and others in the construction industry, who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council that are experts in built environment to create and implement the highest-quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, play. And whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of a safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas "Safety for All: Building Codes in Action", the theme for Building Safety Month, March 20 or May 2022, encourages us all to raise awareness about the importance of safe and sustainable construction, understanding disaster mitigation, energy conservation, safe water, training the next generation, and new technologies in the construction industry. And whereas each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting its lives and property. Now therefore, the City Council of the city of Edina, Minnesota, hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 as Building Safety Month in the city of Edina, Minnesota, and accordingly, encourage our citizens to join with their communities in participation in Building Safety Month. Thank you.
All right. So I don't know if I'm supposed to say anything here, but...
Mr. Fisher.
I'm Dave Fisher. I'm the Chief Building Official here, staff. And I appreciate you reading that and going through this. And I think I've been with the city for about eight years now. And I think every year I've been here, this is, I've asked this, and we've gone forward with this. And this is a month that's celebrated, I guess, throughout the year in the month of May, but it's not just done here. It's done a lot of other cities do this, too. I used to do it in the other communities I worked for as well. And it's done across the nation, too. I also want to thank you guys for supporting our department and what we do. And I think this year's going to be another one of those record years coming, 2022. From what I'm seeing on the docket of what's happening in this town, it is, we're going to be busy.
Well, all you have to do is watch the news when something bad happens, and you realize how lucky we are to have people like you and your team working every day to make sure that the things that are built in our community are built safely. And so that people, people count on that. And I know you don't get a lot of visibility every day, but your work is greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Manager Neil.
Thank you. Just to chime in a little bit on this, because this is, Dave and his team are really top-notch problem solvers. And when you think of how many times in your careers as councilmembers you have a builder or developer come to you and tell you about a problem that they've had with our building staff, it's really quite rare. And those folks, they understand how to work with Dave and his team and vice versa as well. And it's, as he noted, this is a busy community. It's important to keep this group staffed because they really provide, not just for the safety of the community, but also they are, they have a first-row seat to the economic growth of the community as well, and they play a lead role in that.
And I can tell you, as somebody who works, you know, in other places in local government, that the reputation is top-notch. And we count on you to protect the community, and you do a fabulous job.
It really starts with everybody here. Just, it really does. So thank you.
Well, thank you. All right.
Have a good day.
You, Nick. All right. Does that do it for special recognitions and presentations? We've done, you know, all those. So now we're on to public hearings. And I think one more time, I'll note for folks that if you are not here in the chambers and you want to participate in a public hearing, you can call 800-374-0221, enter the conference ID 933-8466, give the operator your name, street address, and telephone number, and then press star 1 on your keypad when you'd like to get in the queue to speak, and a city staff member will introduce you when it is your turn. So with that, we have a couple of public hearings this evening. One is, the first one is a request to keep more than three pets. And who's going to present on this one? Do we have, do we have a staff report?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, why don't you give the introduction, and then we'll ask the applicants to...
Okay. I'm Tim Hunter. I'm the Animal Control Officer with Edina. And the applicants are Craig and Lee Strauss at 4112 Arden. They...
5112.
Oh, 51, sorry. They made the application to keep a fourth dog. And then we sent out the mailing according to the procedures, and we received some feedback. All the feedback was extremely supportive, except for one, which opposed the application based on more general terms rather than very specific terms to the applicants. Looking at our records, we didn't have any sort of complaints over the time that they've been there. No animal-related complaints at all. And based on the responses that we've gotten from the mailings, it was all very supportive and complimentary of their husbandry of their dogs that they currently have. Based on that, I found no reason to object it, and so our staff recommendation would be to approve it.
And I understand, Officer Hunter, that you're asking that we consider approving it tonight rather than keeping the public hearing open as we have in other situations?
Correct.
Okay. The applicants, you want to share what your request is?
My name's Craig Strauss. This is my wife, Lee.
Welcome.
We live in 50, we live at 5112 Arden. We're passionate dog lovers, as you can imagine. One of our dogs is a therapy dog in the local schools at Normandale. We never expected to own a fourth dog, but our daughter likes to create blankets that we take to the Golden Valley Humane Society. And long story short, we met a dog that felt like it would be both a good therapy dog and a dog that would fit well with our family. We believe that training dogs and having dogs educate our kids and also give back to our community with unconditional love and support. So we recognize the absolute broadness of the work that you do and that this is not something we want to use too much time, but we wanted to go through the appropriate process and ask for approval. And this is the first time I'm actually meeting Tim, although he's emailed and talked with me. So thank you. We're happy to answer any questions or share more details.
Great. Well, thanks for being here tonight. Any questions for Officer Hunter or for the applicants? Member Pierce.
Just out of curiosity, what's the, what's the process if, when this is approved, and just hypothetically, there's, you find a fifth dog?
Do you, L U? Appreciate the question.
Would you go through the same process again for an additional pet? Or is this...
So the question is if they wanted to move from four pets to five?
Yeah.
Yeah, they would have to go through the same process again.
So then you, beyond three, you would approve, you'd go through the process for each additional pet, essentially?
Correct. Yeah, it's not, the permit would not be an open-ended opportunity to acquire pets.
Okay, thank you.
And is this, how have we handled these in the past? You know, this beyond three, is it just a one-by-one? And what is the analysis you go through in making your recommendation?
There's a few different ways that I look at it. One is whether or not we've had any previous animal-related complaints with the applicants. In one particular instance I can think of from about eight years ago, there was a question of the living arrangements. They lived in a townhome, so it was a high-density living arrangement. And they wanted to go, if I remember correctly, they wanted to go from three to six because they, the three dogs that they had were agility dogs. And those dogs were aging out of the sport, and they wanted to replace them. And in process, if they had an overlap of the next generation, as it were, the older dogs would be able to teach the younger ones, and the training process would be easier. But having that many dogs, in addition to the fact that we had had several complaints in regards to the applicant in a high-density living arrangement with a common space, both common green space and a common underground garage, we, I recommended that we deny that one. So those are, there's a few components that I take into account.
All right.
These are somewhat rare. I mean, when you think, Officer Hunter, in the last 10 years, we don't have one a year most years.
No, we've had two recently, and that probably, that outstrips probably the last five years combined.
Mr. Kendall, you wanted to chime in?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say, there is a standard in the ordinance that you should apply in this situation. So it says, "The council shall not grant a permit unless it finds that keeping or harboring of more than the allowed number of dogs or cats", which is three, "will not be a nuisance and will not be detrimental to the public health and safety of the applicant or other persons in the vicinity." So that's the standard that applies. And I think that's the standard you applied in the previous application we had about, I don't know, a few months ago.
Sure. Sounds like intuitively what Officer Hunter is applying as well.
Right, correct.
Thank you for that. All right, so this is a public hearing, so stand by for a moment. We'll see if there's anyone in the chambers who would like to speak on this issue. No? Do we have anybody online?
I do have someone who's joined the call but has not entered the queue to speak. If you would like to speak during this public hearing, please press star, then the number 1 on your telephone keypad. That signals your intention to speak. Did you just hear something, too?
Sorry.
Oh, sorry. If you press the pound key by accident, that actually takes you out of the queue. So to enter the queue, to enter the queue, star 1. I'm still not seeing anyone join the queue. It is 8:26 on my clock. I'll wait until 8:27, or I'll come back to you when I have someone in the queue.
Very good.
And he's in the queue. Operator, will you please unmute the line of Mr. John Ashley? And Mr. Ashley, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record. John Ashley, your line is open.
Yes, this is John Ashley here. And my address is 5321 Interlaken Boulevard. If he's able to hear me, okay?
We should hand. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Ashley.
Yeah, I would like to, yes, I would like to talk about the Public Hearing Resolution Number 202238.
That's the next one.
Oh, that's the next one. Can you, can you hold on for a minute?
Sure, sure. Okay.
Well, we're going to take that one up next very shortly. I don't know, Jennifer, how does he go back in the queue?
We'll get him ready.
All right, great. All right, anybody else in the queue?
No.
Okay. All right. I take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Public hearing is closed. Counsel, how do you want to work on this? There's been a request to approve the permit this evening rather than waiting for the normal time that we do on public hearings. So I entertain a motion to that effect.
I will move to approve the permit.
All right, second to the motion.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Sounds like you'll need it.
We appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right. All right. Next up is Public Hearing Resolution Number 2022-38, approving right-of-way easement vacation at 5012 Bedford Avenue.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor of the council, we have the vacation request, the vacation of easements at 512 Bedford Avenue, embodied in Resolution 2022-38. So the existing easement, so you can see here, we have Oxford Avenue on the left, Bedford Avenue on the right, and Interlock and Boulevard on the north. The red arrow is an unimproved alley. It does not have any street. It's just landscaping today. The blue arrow is approved alley. So you'd come in off Oxford, and then you could head south. So the area that's being requested to vacate is half of that vegetated alley shown there with the red arrow. So again, the alley that I pointed out is on the left-hand side of this graphic. It is a 14-foot-wide vegetated alley today between the alley that goes north-south and Bedford Avenue. So the request from the homeowner at 512 Bedford Avenue is to vacate just the south seven feet towards that, their home, and then maintain the north seven feet. So the request is only for that southern half, seven feet. And that would be for them to landscape it as they please, adjacent to their property. So we don't have any issues with it. We have no utilities in there. We don't have any transportation needs, and we would support this vacated area. And the private utilities have said the same, that they have no issues with vacating it. So I would recommend that you close the public hearing at noon on April 11th, and we continue this action to the April 19 City Council meeting. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
All right, any questions for Director Milner? All right, so this is a public hearing, and I think we have somebody online who wants to speak on the issue.
Operator, will you please unmute the line of Mr. John Ashley again? And then, John, again, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Yes, this is John Ashley here.
Welcome back, Mr. Ashley.
And my address is 5321, yes, thank you. Address is 5321 Interlaken Boulevard. So my question is, so when you say right-of-way, does that mean, what does that actually mean? Since right now it is in my backyard. It's kind of like, has already had its station in it.
So I don't, I mean, why don't we, can we answer that question?
Yeah, I think I heard his question. So Mr. Ashley, is this property right here?
And his, his front side, Interlock, and I presume?
Yep. Driveway and front side.
So this is his backyard.
Exactly. Is that unimproved alley. And the request is just to vacate half of it. So we're still going to have rights to that northern half So we're still going to have rights to that northern half that's adjacent to his property, because the application did not request to vacate the entire property. So if he's interested, he could go through the same property and, and we could review that vacation. But right now, nothing would change on his property. He wouldn't have rights to that seven feet adjacent to his property. That would still be city rights in that easement area.
Okay. Mr. Ashley, does that, does that answer your question?
Yes, yeah, that answered a part of the question. The other part is like, so the alley goes all the way from Bedford to Oxford, right? And then, and then right now, it has green space there for vegetation. So the right to vacate is just the seven on the other side, which you said, but I'm still a little bit struggling with, does it go all the way, or does it just act the way?
So it looks like the applicant has requested vacation of the seven feet adjacent to his property that runs the length of his property, and the remainder of the seven feet adjacent to your property would remain right-of-way, unless you were to request a similar vacation.
Okay.
And if Mr. Ashley would like to talk more, I'm definitely available. He could find my number on the website, and I'd be happy to answer his questions, probably a little easier than during the council meeting.
Yeah, right.
So we have till, he can submit comments till next Monday, too, so...
Perfect. Anything, anything further, Mr. Ashley?
Nope, nope. I will, I will talk to you directly.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, is there anyone else in the queue? And anyone in the council chambers who would like to speak on this issue? All right, seeing no further comments, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Oh, a second. This is, the motion as it's written, to close public hearing at noon on April 11.
Oh, sorry.
And continue action at the April 19 meeting. Just to clarify, is that, that's the motion?
That's what I heard.
Okay, thank you. And I vote aye.
All right. And second, and further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, so the motion is to close the public hearing at noon on April 11, continue the action on the item to the April 19 council meeting. All right. So that, that concludes our public hearings for the evening. Next up is Commission Correspondence, Advisory Communication from the Human Rights and Relations Commission, Minutes from the Transportation Commission. Any discussion of either of those items? All right. Then we have Managers' Comments. Manager Neil.
Thank you, Your Honor. These, these are two items that I've included just as information for the, for the council. One is our Q4 report from 2021, and the other is just my kind of summary notes from our, my, at least my attendance at the 2022 NLC conference this year.
Very good. Any questions for Manager Neil on those items? All right. Mayor and Council comments. Commissioner, or Councilmember Jackson, do you want to lead us off?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to point out two events that are coming up. We've talked about one of them before, One Town, One Family. It's an event with the Edina Public Schools. It's at the Edina High School Cafeteria on Thursday, April 14, from 5:30 to 7:45 p.m. And the whole city is invited. We bring your questions and help contribute to the vision of, of the city of Edina as being a welcoming place. And I strongly encourage people to attend, and, and I hope to have a, a night, we'll have a nice crowd there. And the second one is also going to be at the high school, and this is the Youth Climate Summit put on by Project Earth. It's on Saturday, April 16, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Edina High School FIC Auditorium. And I'm looking forward to seeing what the students have planned for us there. So, thank you.
Terrific. Thank you. Member Anderson.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Member Pierce.
Nothing tonight.
All right. I, I just wanted to say I, I did watch, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, but watched the videotape of it, and, and Member Pierce made some remarks at the end that I found resonating, and I thought tonight was a nice difference. And we had a full council chamber, we had people who, it's an important issue and an emotional issue, but people who really, I thought, were thoughtful, were measured, were civil, and it was nice for a change to have those conversations face-to-face instead of over email and, and others. So I, I, even though that's going to be a difficult issue, there's lots of challenging parts to it, it was great to have a civilized conversation to get it started, so. So I thank the people who came and, and kind of celebrate the fact that maybe we're going to get back to more of that kind of interaction. So that's all I have. Anything further from anybody as a result of that? All right. So I would, how did I do? I did pretty well.
Yeah, three minutes, we could keep talking.
I'm going to get the under.
We're still...
All right. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Now you can talk.
[laughter][1765.43]